Good morning. If I could have your attention, please. Everyone would take their seat. Welcome to the Henry County Board of Commissioners. Nine AM Tuesday, April the ninth, two thousand and twenty four, regular scheduled board meeting. Would like to welcome everyone this morning. Would also like to welcome our new Commissioner who represents District Four, Commissioner Michael Price. He was sworn in on yesterday, and we are glad to have you seated with us today. We will begin our meeting with our invocation by Pastor Leonard Himes, and then he will also lead us in our pledge of allegiance. If I could get everyone to stand, please.
Good morning. Father, we come to thee this day, and another day of government and, Lord, managing affairs of this land. So, Father, we invite you into this room and into our county. We ask your blessings upon each and every one of those serving daily, laboring in this vineyard. So, meet with us in this meeting, lead, guide, and direct. And, Lord, we ask your blessings on everything that takes place this day, in Jesus' name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
I'd like to officially call our board meeting to order. Do have a couple announcements. The following planning and zoning item was advertised for April the ninth, Board of Commissioners meeting, but has been postponed by the applicant. ULDC Amendment twenty-four dash zero one, public hearing is postponed, an ordinance by Terry Lynn Woodall of Stockbridge. So, if there's anyone here for that particular planning and zoning item, it will not be heard today. Next item we will have on the agenda is the proclamation recognizing April, two thousand and twenty-four, as Autism Month. And if we could have Nicholas from Communications to please come forward to read that proclamation.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair Commissioners. Have a proclamation for you in recognition of April as National Autism Awareness Month. It reads, whereas autism is a complex developmental disability that most often appears in early childhood and encompasses a broad range of conditions affecting the way of an individual communicates and interacts with others, including but not limited to reasoning and motor skills, challenges and sensory sensitivities. And whereas, according to the CDC, one percent of the global population has an autism spectrum disorder, the prevalence of autism has nearly doubled from the early two thousands to two thousand and twenty-three, with one of every fifty-nine babies born in the United States being diagnosed. Whereas, and whereas, experts say that more than three point five million Americans live with an autism spectrum disorder, both adults and children, whom our colleagues, classmates, friends, and loved ones each having something to contribute to the American story. And whereas, with increased awareness, early diagnosis, and intervention, and access to appropriate services and support, outcomes can be significantly improved, in which those living with autism can be productive and enjoy opportunities to achieve the highest qualities of life. And whereas, we all recognize those around the globe who live on an autism spectrum and the challenges they face, and celebrate the countless ways they strengthen our communities and enrich our world. And we reaffirm their fundamental rights to participate fully in society, live with respect, and achieve their greatest potential. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Henry County Board of Commissioners recognizes the month of April as National Autism Awareness Month, and joins our communities in supporting initiatives that bring awareness and early intervention to those affected by autism, and support endeavors to raise acceptance and understanding for those affected by autism, as well as their family, friends, and supporters. Commissioners, we also have Sloan and Bobby Jinks and Kimberly Washington here to accept the proclamations.
Yes, if I could have Kimberly Washington and Sloan Jinks please.
Come forward. We'd like to take a picture. This is near and dear to my heart. I have a five-year-old grandson that is artistic as well. And so, we definitely want to bring awareness to this. So, we're going to come over and take some pictures at the board.
As well as their family, friends, and supporters. Commissioners, we also have Sloan and Bobby Jinks and Kimberly Washington here to accept the proclamations.
Yes, if I could have Kimberly Washington and Sloan Jinks please.
Come forward. We'd like to take a picture. This is near and dear to my heart. I have a five-year-old grandson that is artistic as well. And so, we definitely want to bring awareness to this. So, we're going to come over and take some pictures at the board. So, the second proclamation is recognizing April, two thousand and twenty-four, as National Fair Housing Month. If we can get Raven to come forward and present that proclamation.
Good morning. I have a proclamation recognizing National Fair Housing Month, April, two thousand and twenty-four. Whereas, the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four provided constitutional protection to all Americans as a provision of preventing discrimination at the federal level and an end to institutional racism. Prior to nineteen sixty-four, these protections did not extend to the housing market. And whereas, led by Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., a series of housing marches in Chicago shined light on the lack of fair housing, bringing to the political forefront in nineteen sixty-six. And whereas, on April eleventh, nineteen sixty-eight, a week following the assassination of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., President Lyndon B. Johnson signed into law the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-eight as an amendment to the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four. Title eight of the nineteen sixty-eight Act is more commonly known as the Fair Housing Act. And whereas, April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four marks the fifty-sixth anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act, which prohibits discrimination in housing transactions on the basis of race, color, national origin, religion, sex to include sexual orientation and gender identity, familial status, disability, and religion, as amended. And whereas, today, the Fair Housing Act is the act in action as education and outreach continues to benefit communities, as individuals are better informed as to their rights in housing-related transactions. And now, therefore, be it resolved, Henry County Board of Commissioners promote and support the goals and ideals of the Fair Housing Act and recognize April as Fair Housing Month. Be it further resolved, Henry County Board of Commissioners acknowledges the relevance of the Fair Housing Act in today's society and encourages all individuals, agencies, and institutions, public and private, in Henry County, Georgia, to take action today in a more inclusive tomorrow, abiding by the letter and the spirit of the Fair Housing Law. Sign and seal this ninth day of April, two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you. So, Raven, Shannon, and anyone else from housing would like to come forward and take a picture?
I believe we have a community development specialist here.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is presentations. We have an update on CDBG. Raven, if you would go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Raven Stone. I'm a community development specialist.
I am a community development specialist.
Just a little bit slower here.
Is that better? Okay, good. I'm a community development specialist, too, with the department. So, in two thousand and twenty, we were given our COVID funds. We've referred to them as our CDBGCV funds. We received two allotments of those funds totaling just a little over one point five million dollars. So, with those funds, we were able to assist six different types of projects and to assist six thousand two hundred and sixty-two individuals. Now, that was over the course of twenty, let's see, fall of two thousand and twenty to fall of two thousand and twenty-three. With those funds, we were able to fund an employment program, employment training program, which provided a two-week course to assist in enhancing those skills to acquire a job. So, interview, resume writing, things like that. We assisted a few food banks to be able to provide a month's worth of assistance to residents. This would have provided food, toiletries, PPE, things of that nature. We were also able to assist with health services, providing medical, dental, and mental health services to uninsured Henry County adults. We provided assistance to services of abused and battered spouses. This provided technology improvements to the facility, allowed for staff and residents to stay connected with, you know, new computers, things of that nature. We provided services to abused and neglected children, to assist with building an outdoor exercise equipment facility, technology improvements to connect the youth with doctors, families, and keep up with schooling, security improvements to maintain the facility, PPE, cleaning, COVID testing materials, things of that nature. We were also able to assist in with subsistence payments. That's going to be our mortgage, rent, and utility assistance. Additionally, we received emergency solutions grants funds from the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. With this allotment of funds, we were able to assist in seven different counties. We serve the seven-county region. We provided hotel motel stays. These were for thirty nights, case management services. And the ultimate goal was to provide clients with stability, to be able to be self-sufficient and transition into our rapid rehousing program. Now, our rapid rehousing program covered costs such as a security deposit, utility deposit, rent, utility payments, things of that nature. We were able to assist a total of forty-three families, getting them rehoused and reestablished in new communities. And I can answer any questions you may have.
Is there any questions from the board?
Thank you.
Next item is our financial services update.
Third quarter presentation. David Smith, Financial Services Director.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair Commissioners and Henry County community. I just wanted to provide a brief review of our performance through the third quarter of two thousand and twenty-four. As you remember or recall, we did cover some of this when we were at our retreat this year. So, let's start with year-to-date revenues. Currently, year-to-date, we're at about two hundred and one point five million dollars, which is approximately, overall, in total revenues, twelve percent greater than our budgeted revenue. Year-over-year, that's comparing ourselves, two thousand and twenty-four to two thousand and twenty-three. Our property tax collections are about nine point two million dollars higher. So, let's talk about expenditures. Lot of words there, but I'll be brief. Our year-to-date expenditures are a hundred and sixty-eight point two million dollars. Overall, we're trending slightly lower than expected. This is primarily due to the timing of our two thousand and twenty-four debt service payment, which will be paid next quarter. That's in April, May, and June timeframe. The major expenses that are going to be incurred later over the next quarter, and as we run into fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five, are going to be for the Elections Department, because they are preparing for the upcoming local, state, and federal elections. So, this is a real small representation. It's really just a numerical representation of what I've summarized, and it should be included in your packet. You'll be able to see it better there. But overall, most departments are within our spending thresholds. I wanted to point out a couple of things that have been happening in facilities maintenance, as well as in parks, where we've had several emergency repairs to our HVAC systems, which has cost us, these are all unbudgeted and unplanned, one point three million dollars. And then, we had to have some major repairs at our parks due to vandalism and septic failures, which approximately two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. I prepared some pictures so you could see some of the things that are going on here for facilities maintenance. This is HVAC repairs that were necessary here at the Administration Building, roof repairs, and here's what's going on at some of our parks. I want to talk about the SPOS five collections. SPOS five county collections continue to trend well, with approximately one hundred and sixty-two point eight million collected to date, which is above what our budgeted collection rate is. We've spent approximately ninety point two million dollars of that as our projects began to ramp up and costs continued to increase. I'm going to address T-SPOS. This is the graphical representation, where the red line is the expenditures. The green is the revenues, but you can see where we're all above the blue line that's there, the budgeted expenditures, or budget for collections and expenditures. These are some of the SPOS five projects that are ongoing, that they've completed in the SPOS program. Let's talk about T-SPOS. T-SPOS County Collections are approximately, and this is year-to-date, I have an updated figure for you for April, but through the first third quarter, it's sixty-eight point eight million dollars, and just a few expenditures to date, approximately seven point nine million dollars. This is a graphical representation of our T-SPOS performance against the budget. I'm prepared to take any questions you may have.
Is there any questions from the board?
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, the BLC appointment to the Airport Authority to fill the unexpired term of John Means, July eighteenth of two thousand and twenty-seven. There are a list of nominees that you all received in your packet. Lonnie Wilson, George Powell, Scott Gurken, Vic Syracuse, David Clem. I'd like to call for a motion to vote for one of these individuals to fill Mr. Means' term. Commissioner Angler?
Got a couple of comments in the nomination. The gentleman's name is Lonnie Wilson. He comes highly recommended from John Means, who was, for a short term, the Chair of that board. And there's been questions of reason why John may have left. John went to take a job as the Asset Manager for the Metropolitan Washington Airport Authority, where he manages over thirty-six billion dollars, which includes two airports, the train transit, and highways. And I asked him for his recommendation and his suggestion with his expertise. So, with that being said, I would like to nominate Lonnie Wilson.
Nomination for Lonnie Wilson. Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of Lonnie Wilson, raise your hand. Those that oppose, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. If we could have our county manager, Sherri Matthews, to come forward. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the board. This is your Consent Agenda for Tuesday, April the ninth, nine AM. Under the Department of Transportation, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners to purchase one Gradol XL three thousand one hundred V four-by-four in the amount of five hundred and one thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars and sixty cents, utilizing the Henry County Department of Transportation FY two thousand and twenty-four capital equipment budget. Under E nine-one-one, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement between the Georgia Department of Public Safety and Henry County for the sharing of public safety radio system information to enhance public safety in the state of Georgia. We also have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners authorizing execution of a memorandum of understanding between the Georgia Department of Transportation and Henry County for the sharing of public safety radio system information to enhance public safety in the state of Georgia. Under Financial Services, we have a resolution approving the disposal of surplus vehicles identified on Attachment A through the online auction process via GovDeals dot com. Under Fire Rescue, we have a resolution for the emergency purchase of two Saber Custom BTO Pompers, two Saber Custom Tankers, one Enforcer Custom one hundred and seven-foot aerial, and two Saber Stock Program Pompers from Ten-Eight Fire and Safety LLC in the amount of seven million four hundred and eighty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Funding will be from capital funds. Under Parks and Recreation, we have a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners accepting the allocation for the Georgia Recreation and Parks Association Building Opportunities in Out-of-School Time Boost Grants Program awarded to the Henry County Parks and Recreation Department in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars. Under Planning and Zoning, we have a resolution approving a bid award, RFP number twenty-four dash twenty-four, to TSW for consulting services in the amount of two hundred and twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars for the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five Henry County Unified Land Development Code update and rewrite. Under the SPOS Department, we have a resolution to authorize the acquisition of seventeen thousand seven hundred and eighty-five square feet of right-of-way, three thousand seven hundred and forty-one of permanent utility easement, and two thousand four hundred and thirty-eight square feet of temporary construction easement, more or less, in Land Lot Seven of the eleventh district, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation, and this is regarding the Night Drive project, parcel number one. We also have, under SPOS for SPOS five, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners authorizing a budget amendment in the amount of four point six million dollars in bid award for the construction of the Flippin Road Extension Project to Southeastern Site Development, Inc., in the amount of five million seven hundred and ninety-three thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars. The total cost of the project is now estimated at six million seven hundred thousand. The project is, was District Two, currently District Five. Under T-SPOS, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners approving a budget amendment in the amount of one million dollars in the bid award for McDonough Parkway to Southern Site Development, Inc., in the amount of fourteen million five hundred and thirty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars. Under Technology Services, we have a resolution approving the purchase of the Managed Services Contract from Comtech to the Vigilon Equipment, utilizing a state contract in the amount of three hundred and twenty-six thousand twenty-seven for all Henry County locations. We also have a resolution to approve security cameras for the Administration Building, five Parks and Recreation Centers, Animal Control, and the Recycling Center from NET Planner, utilizing a state contract in the amount of a hundred and forty-one thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars. We also have a resolution approving a software three-year maintenance agreement under Tech Services as well. And then, under the Transit Department, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Henry County authorizing the renewal of the Public Transportation Agency Safety Plan, PTSAP, as required, in order to receive federal and state funds from the Federal Transit Association. Madam Chair, this ends the Consent Agenda.
It is a couple of items on here that we would like for staff to come up and to give some clarification, or just a... Okay, sorry.
I apologize, Chair. I need to... If you don't mind, I need to make one clarification on the T-SPOS item. The contract is to Southeastern Site Development and not Southern Site Development. So, I want to make sure that we perfect the record to reflect that the T-SPOS award for the McDonough Parkway is Southeastern Site Development and not Southern Site Development.
I need a couple of... I need to do this for some questions that came to me from Commissioner Price. And so, if we could get nine-one-one to come up and talk about what these intergovernmental agreements do for us and why they are necessary.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. The intergovernmental agreements, what they do is they allow us to speak directly to these other agencies. So, we'll be able to talk directly to GSP, rather than calling them on the phone, getting their dispatcher, and then they relaying the message to them. So, it just basically saves us time in communicating with these other units that are out here in our community.
Commissioner Price, that you... And then, the other clarification is out of, for the SPOS five. The amended amount from four point six to, I mean, it's got three different prices. So, can Rocky or someone come up and explain how we got to this process?
So, we're bids.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Harrow, Vice Chair, and members of the board. Which item was it we wanted to start with on this?
We just, we need the item that's the SPOS five item, the budget amendment from the four point six to the five point seven to the six point seven.
So, the original estimated cost for Flippin Road was three million four hundred seventy-six thousand two hundred and six dollars. Once the actual construction bid came in, it came in at five million seven hundred ninety-three thousand two twenty-four. construction bid came in, it came in at $5,793,224.55. Most of that increase is attributed to the material cost and the original projections that we had when we originally started designing the project. So the cost came in way above what was anticipated.
Okay, so it says that... so the bid amount was the 5.7, but it says the total cost of the project is now 6.7.
There's no funding that's going to be needed for the increase in construction, utility relocations, and our project management.
Okay, go ahead.
The additional 4.6 million is available to SPOSS 5 tax collections.
So we're going to be taking that away from other projects, or is this for... is this labeled as surplus?
So there is no surplus. There is just collections that we've exceeded over the months. And so in Mr. Smith's presentation a couple of minutes ago, he did show where our SPOSS collections have been in excess of what we projected month over month. And so projects that are coming in above what the initial estimates were placed at are using those funds where those collections went over.
So these were projects that were on the SPOSS list anyway?
These are SPOSS projects, yes.
These are SPOSS projects. And so from the time that we initially set what we thought the cost was going to be, construction and material costs have gone up substantially. And so that's why we have the change in this.
And you're going to see that across the board with most all of our projects, even the capital projects that we've brought forth to the Board. Material costs have gone up. I think Commissioner Anglin asked, or Commissioner Lewis, you know, how do we get in front of this as we start preparing for future SPOSS programs? And a lot of it is very driven on what the cost of those materials are going to be. The challenge with this project, and with most all of our SPOSS 5 projects, is when the project list was developed, it was several years ago. And so we're having to adjust based on that.
How many projects are left on the list that has not been bid out yet?
For SPOSS 5?
Yes, SPOSS 5, Transportation and Public Safety. What's on the list that have not been bid out yet?
On Transportation, I could give you an exact number later on today, but I know we have Burke Road and Night Drive that have not been bid out yet. I think those are the main two that have not been bid out in Transportation and SPOSS 5. And we're currently acquiring right-of-way on those projects.
But the funding source has already been added up for those projects. And so we're not pulling from existing projects. This is just the over collections month over month.
These projects that's on the list, them are going to be above the estimated cost as well.
It depends, Commissioner.
I think above those projects, 3.5, but it's probably going to come in probably...
If your utility costs go up, if your right-of-way costs go up, and obviously, materials is what's driving it. When we have projects like Flippin Road, it's a much bigger project versus a Burke Road project. And so we won't know until we solicit those bids. And then at that point, we'll know if those prices are going to be higher. But it could be.
Okay, thank you.
Can I get a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
I have a question on another...
Which item is that, Commissioner Wilson?
Fire Rescue on the $7.4 million purchase of equipment.
Uh, it's Chief Burnett to come forward.
Chief Burnett, if you will come forward, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, Board.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chief.
It's the resolution on the emergency purchase of two Saber Custom BTO Pompers.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you explain?
So this is a purchase of the resolution that was approved back in January by the Board for the replacement vehicles for our department. These vehicles are going to be replacing current vehicles that we have in the fleet that's aging that need to be replaced. There's one additional piece of apparatus that's on here, but it's not an apparatus that's staffed every day. What I mean by that is, right now, we have one tanker truck in the county, and we're asking for an additional tanker truck. So this is one to replace the one that we currently have that's over 20 years old, and then an additional tanker truck. The tanker truck's not staffed every single day, though, because it's not an everyday response vehicle. It's like a, you know, in case of an emergency, so to speak, in what we do. But they're going to be, you know, placed, one in the south end of the county, and one in the north end of the county. And they're really mainly coverage for the interstate, because there's no hydrants on the interstate. There aren't a lot of vehicle fires on the interstate, so we need a lot of water. And then there's one additional ladder truck that's in here. And the reason that we're not asking for personnel this year in the budget to go along with the truck is because of the, you know, severe extended build time of the apparatus, because you're looking anywhere between three and a half to four years of a build time. So the request for personnel will come, you know, probably in a couple of years from now to be placed on that apparatus.
So you mentioned three and a half to four years. Is that on all the equipment or just on the aerials?
Most of them. The engines, I think, are 36 to 42 months. So they're all kind of that estimated build time.
All right, thank you.
To give you an example, we have crews that are out today that are doing a final inspection on the three ambulances of the six. We received three. They're doing a final inspection on the three ambulances that the Board approved and we purchased in September of '21. We're just now receiving those ambulances in. So that's kind of what we're looking at.
And that is why now we have a agreement in place to make sure that we're in rotation.
Yes, ma'am.
This is something that should have been done years ago to make sure that our fire equipment and, you know, apparatus was in a rotation. But now we're there, and we'll be able to move forward to make sure that our fire department has the equipment that you need to be able to serve our citizens in the county. So thank you, Chief, and your team for putting that together. And thank you to the Board that supported, you know, us being able to be able to put this agreement in place. Any other questions?
I have a couple of comments. Thank you.
Couple of comments. One, I did have some questions about the ULDC update rewrite, and Tucson answered those for me. So I just wanted to thank Cluster Lead Tucson Kirk for answering those questions. And then I just wanted to actually point out something about the SPOSS 5, the Flippin Road Extension Project. And I just want to just point out to our constituents and those around the county, you know, when we build stuff, we think, all of us as Commissioners and staff, we consistently hear, you know, you're not building the infrastructure. Nothing's happened with the infrastructure. This is what's happened with the infrastructure. We are consistently moving forward, making sure that we have road projects. These road projects are coming to fruition. This Flippin Road Extension Project specifically is going to help the traffic into Dutch Town Corridor, Mount Carmel Corridor, and especially the Dutch Town Cluster of Schools. This is going to provide a tremendous amount of relief for that area. So I just want to point that out to the citizens, that we are actually taking heed to what you're saying. We are actually making sure that we build the infrastructure to keep up with the growth that we have in Henry County. So I just want to point that out, and just thank you to the Commissioners for, you know, your staff's continuation of making sure that we are addressing the infrastructure in the county. Thank you.
Could I get a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
I'm moved to approve the Consent Agenda.
Got a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, all in favor. Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Animal Control. This is a public hearing for dangerous dog classification. If I could have Captain Hopgood come forward and our county attorney come forward.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Mr. Chair, and Board members. This is a hearing to... we're conducting a hearing to determine whether certain animals will be classified as dangerous dogs under the county's code. As you may know, the county does have a dangerous dog ordinance, and it calls for an animal control board. The county does not have an animal control board, but the code also provides that the Board of Commissioners serves in that capacity when there's no animal control board created, which is why we're having the hearing before you this morning. Captain Hopgood, as the Animal Control Director, has the authority to make that initial designation of an animal as a dangerous dog. Once that designation is made, the owner of the dog has the right to request a hearing. The owner has requested that hearing, and we're having that hearing, conducting that hearing, excuse me, this morning. So the way the hearing will go, Captain Hopgood will provide the factual background for the designation. You will have the opportunity to ask any questions either during or after his presentation. Then the owner of the dog has the opportunity to come forward and speak in opposition of the designation. Once the hearing is concluded, then you will need to make a decision, but there's a timeframe within which you can make that decision. The decision will be issued in writing and sent to the owner of the dog.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. So the community love all animals, and some people only love their animals.
Their animals, but we are all responsible for those animals that are our own. We cannot allow those animals to interfere with the peace and tranquility that we all deserve. When owners neglect their responsibilities, their animals become capable of being a threat to public safety. Georgia law and the Henry County Animal Control Ordinance recognizes this fact, and we classify dogs that pose a threat as either dangerous or vicious. The designation of dangerous dog can be given to any dog that bites someone, any dog that aggressively attacks, causes a person to reasonably believe that the dog is going to bite them even though no bite occurs, or a dog that goes off its owner's property and kills somebody else's pet. The designation of a vicious dog is the more serious of the two classifications. That designation is reserved for dogs that inflict what the law defines as serious injury or causes the death of an individual. Once a dog has been classified as either dangerous or vicious, as a matter of public safety, the ordinance imposes additional requirements on the dog owner regarding the containment and restraint of that dog to hopefully ensure that no one else is attacked or injured. One of those requirements also is that they're only allowed to have one of those dogs if they meet all the other requirements. The requirements for possession of a dog classified as dangerous were included in the exhibits for this hearing. The details that form my decision to classify these particular dogs are as follows. The Henry County Animal Care and Control Department has received numerous complaints regarding the American Pitbull Terrier Mixed Dogs named Gunner and Chaos by their owner, Ms. Audra Watson, a tenant of three, Skyland Drive West in Locust Grove, Georgia, and the city of Locust Grove. Ms. Watson has received five prior violation written warnings from this department regarding your dogs running at large just since July of 2023. In total, we've issued 26 court citations and nine warnings to Ms. Watson. Those violations, the ones since July, the first one happened on July 19th, the second and third on November the 27th, the fourth on December the 12th, and the fifth on February 22nd. These are just the most recent violations. The others go back more than two years. On October the 5th, Ms. Watson was issued four citations, two per dog, for failure to restrain and public nuisance. They were issued by the city of Locust Grove for the municipal court on behalf of Officer Gray. These were two different dogs from the ones that were brought us here today. Ms. Watson personally met with animal control officers four times and signed five different warning notices. So Ms. Watson is certainly aware that her dogs are not allowed to run loose and unattended, and that her dogs continuing to run loose and unattended is a nuisance to her neighbors. The incident today is from a second group of dogs that violations stem from. On December 4th, 2023, she had a different dog that was acting aggressively and impeding the flow of traffic in their neighborhood. Ms. Watson's response was, "Shoot the dog. She has puppies." The dog attempted to bite ACO James as she attempted to impound the dog. Ms. Watson's father signed the dog over and the puppies to animal control on this incident. In the late morning of February 26th of this year, the E-911 Department received a complaint from a resident of Skyland Drive regarding two aggressive unrestrained dogs running at large. Many of the residents were familiar with these dogs and their aggressive temperament. Some of these residents are here today. Were you to have any questions that you would like to ask them. Three animal control officers arrived on the scene. When they spoke to a male at Ms. Watson's residence, he advised he was not the owner. As the officers began to leave the residence to search for the dogs, they were both returning to the residence. Both dogs were able to be restrained after they attempted to bite... sorry, after they attempted to bite the officers and were acting very aggressively towards them. When the officers returned to the door to Ms. Watson's residence, no one would answer the door, even though the officers could see movement and no one had left the residence. So an impound notice was attached to the door. Both dogs were transported to the shelter for the safety of the residents. And on February 27th, Ms. Watson was issued eight citations for this incident. Four citations were issued for each dog. The charges were failure to restrain, failure to vaccinate, failure to display rabies tags, and public nuisance. She refused to sign the acknowledgement of the citations. Those citations are scheduled to be heard in Henry County Magistrate Court on May 14th, 2024. Copies of those citations were also included in the exhibits. In summary, while running loose and unattended, Gunner and Chaos not only aggressively chased residents, but attacked and attempted to bite animal control officers in the performance of their duties. Coupling this with Ms. Watson's continued disregard of Henry County's Animal Control Ordinance by not ensuring that her dogs stay properly restrained has caused me to classify both of Ms. Watson's dogs as dangerous dogs. On March 1st, Ms. Watson was served a notice condemning both dogs as dangerous dogs, as well as a copy of the county's Animal Control Ordinance and a blank notice for an appeal hearing. On March the 4th, she returned the request for the hearing filled out without a date. These are also included in the exhibits. I'll be happy to answer any additional questions that you have. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay. So what's... what do we do next?
Apologies, Madam Chair. If the owner is present and would like to present some testimony or evidence in opposition of the designation, she can come forward now.
Is she still...
Um, okay. She was in jail before, so I didn't know if she was right now.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right.
Since the hearing has been duly noticed, the owner was given the proper notice to appear today, and she's, as far as we know, capable of being here to appear. The next step is for the Board acting in the role of Animal Control Board to either sustain, modify, or overrule Captain Hopgood's designation of dangerous dog status. You have 10 days to do that, and a written notice will be sent to Ms. Watson regarding your decision.
Were there some witnesses here that were involved in any... residents that were involved in any of the attacks? I would like to hear from them.
Can I have a quick question? Is she in possession of the dogs?
No, sir. Animal Care and Control has possession of both dogs.
Okay.
Could you say your name? Yes, ma'am. My name is Carol Reed. I live at 5 Skyland Drive West. And Ms. Watson's dogs have numerously attacked people, even my neighbor. There have been instances where my dad would ride his bike, his name's Mike Woody, he would ride his bike around the neighborhood, and the dogs had actually attacked him and bit his pants to where there was a hole in his sweatpants. And a little... I had come outside, and a girl was riding her bike down the road, and she couldn't come back up the road because of the dogs. She was so petrified about the dogs that I went in my house and got a bat, and I walked her home. And I tried to confront Ms. Watson about the dogs, and Ms. Watson wouldn't even come and speak to me about anything. She didn't speak to me till February when we were in court. And that's been going on for probably two years.
So she's not keeping the dogs fenced?
Standing or contained at all?
No, the dogs will get out. Like, she'll put them in her back fence, and the next thing you know, the dogs escape. And then they're running all over the neighborhood, and nobody can go down the road. And if you come out of your yard and those dogs are out there, they'll viciously approach you, teeth showing, they'll growl at you. I mean, it's really scary. And the little girl was about 13 years old, and she was... And the little girl was about 13 years old, and she was so scared to go past their house to her home that I had to walk her home, you know? And that's, it was, it's just sad, you know? Ms. Watson doesn't really care about a dog. She claims she does, but if you cared about your dogs, you wouldn't let them attack people, and you wouldn't train them that way.
Absolutely. Anyone else like to speak?
That was my daughter just now, and I'm riding my bike around a half-mile circle, and every time I'd come around, they'd target me. And I'd have to stop and scream at them to keep from getting bit. Every time I went around, and they're, they're huge dogs, and all I could see was teeth coming at me every time I'd go around the block, so that's all I have to say on that. I love dogs, but I don't think I love those dogs, and they sure didn't love me. Alrighty, thank you.
Is there any questions from the board? Okay.
Good morning. My name is Jennifer DeLee. I live directly across the street from Ms. Watson. I actually went to school with her. When my biggest issue was Thanksgiving weekend, the dogs chased my father, who is 80 years old, backed him up to the back of his truck to where he had to climb into the bed of his truck and wait for them to run away. My dad is 80 years old, he's a heart patient, and he's on blood thinners. If they simply just knock him down and cut his arm just from a scratch, it's over because of his heart condition. My mother is 74, she's also here today, she can tell you about it. But when this incident happened on Thanksgiving, we didn't see him at home. Later that same night, my neighbors behind us thought that it was my dad walking out to his truck late at night, but in actuality, the dogs had chased a man to my dad's truck, and it was unlocked, and he went in and sat inside my dad's truck. This person did not steal anything, he was simply trying to get away from the dogs. When I spoke with Ms. Watson on Friday after Thanksgiving and tried to tell her, like, hey, we gotta do something because we've had these dogs around, and just to be quite honest with you, we have a BB gun on the front door, and we've had to use it to back them up before. And I told her, we've gotta do something, like, they can't do this to my dad or my mother because it's, that's a very serious thing with them living across the street. And she told me, the people behind you have already complained. If your dad feels threatened, tell him to shoot him. It's okay, I'll understand. My heart broke at that point because those dogs don't deserve it. I have dogs myself. You, you don't, you don't do that, and if you love those dogs, you certainly don't just tell somebody, just shoot them, I'll understand. And what's that supposed to do to my dad, who's 80, much less anybody who witnesses something like that?
Obviously, I'm Ellen DeLee, I'm her mother, and that's our house across the street, and she lives with us. They have chased my 23-year-old grandson from his car in the driveway all the way to my front porch. They have chased me the same way. They have chased a teenage boy coming up the street. When he got to the corner of my yard, they came out and approached him. He ran across my yard to my carport out on the other side and jumped up on the back of my car and got all the way to the roof of my car trying to get away from them, and then apologized to me. This, I don't know what else to tell you.
Well, you shouldn't have to live in terror in your own neighborhood.
That's all I know.
But I have a question. When she's saying, "Shoot the dogs," is this like?
They cry, they're saying, "I can't control them, they need to just be removed." I mean, I'm trying to understand, because it's like she's saying, "Shoot them," and all of this.
It, it seems that she's just unable to control the dogs, and I believe that's just a reaction of how to take care of the problem quickly, but she keeps allowing the dogs to have puppies, so then it's just a recurring problem.
And there's no way that they can be removed from her?
We currently have possession of the dogs now, so if y'all deem them as dangerous, she won't get those two back.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I would say I'm a dog lover, have always loved dogs.
And mainly the American Pitbull Terrier. I've bred them for over 20-something years, and a lot of people have a perception of them that's not accurate of the breed. They are a sweet breed, but I tell people all the time, in the wrong hands, they can be the most deadliest breed as well. So it really takes responsible ownership to handle those dogs, because they have a tenacity about them that once they get started, you know, you gotta know what to do and how to handle them to, you know, be able to keep them under control and manage. And to me, it seems obvious that she's not a responsible dog owner for not even showing up today. And so with a recurring problem, no resident should be in fear. So, to me, her absence today just proves that she's not a responsible dog owner of any type of dog.
Just a couple of questions. Can you define failure to restrain for me? I just want to make sure I understand. Failure to restrain, can you give me what the definition y'all use on that?
I'm trying to pull up the, the actual code section that we have printed out. Most of the stuff that I had printed out was the dangerous dog.
I just want to make sure. I'm assuming that. Having on a leash or not having within a confined area?
As far as the county code is, is concerned, the, the restraint, they have to be on leash if they're, if they're out of their yard, or they have to be in a fenced-in yard. They can be tethered, but it has to be a pivotal tether that doesn't allow them to get tangled on anything else, like a tree or a pole or anything like that. It has to be a swivel tether. But other than that, that's, that's what the restraint is.
Okay, that's, that's a good enough answer. And then the second question I have is, I just want to make sure, there were several notes in here that there appeared to be some question at times of ownership of the animals? And are we, we are for sure that she is the owner of these?
Yes. When, when she came up to sign the citations, she, she admitted that she was the owner of the dogs. The only confusion came when the person that answered the door was not her, it was a male. And then another male, a different one, had come up to, to reclaim the dogs, he thought. And then when he realized there were citations involved, he went back to the car and got her and said, "She's the owner, not me." Yes, sir. Thank you.
Captain, for going to these measures to protect the people of the community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
All right. So what I'd like to do is, I'd like to call for a motion for this, for these dogs to be listed under the dangerous dog classification. Got a motion?
Sir.
Got a second. There's no further discussion, all in favor. Motion carries. Thank you.
And, and Chair, I would like to have a written, a written opinion for the board to issue, because in the event she decides to pursue, pursue appeal rights in the Superior Court, we'll need that for Superior Court.
Yes, thank you so much.
Madam Chair, in our recognition and also visiting the dogs as dangerous. We do have to have y'all to vote and, and give us the right for the ownership of the dogs to become Animal Care and Control so that we can take care of the animals. Because once they're being deemed dangerous, we can't adopt those dogs back out to the general public.
So, you'd a motion for us to?
To grant the ownership over to Animal Care and Control.
To grant ownership, so I make a motion for us to grant ownership to Animal Control?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I get a motion for that? Motion. Second, all in favor. Motion carries.
Thank y'all so much.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is MC-24-02, Eldenberg Investors LLC of Madison.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members and Citizens of Henry County. The modification to zoning conditions request in front of you is for the Edenberg subdivision located on Hampton Locust Grove Road west of Highway 155 South. The request is to modify conditions related to the size requirements for single-family homes in the subdivision. The subject property is highlighted in green on each map and is south of the Prologis Park and west of the Highway 155 South Publix. The applicant is requesting to modify the zoning conditions of the approved resolution number 20-134 for the rezoning case, RZ-1920, that was approved on July 21st, 2020, for a single-family residential development zone R3. Condition 10 of the rezoning resolution reads that all homes shall be a minimum of 2,800 square feet of heated space. The request would be to modify Condition 10 to allow for more variety in architectural design. With language reading, homes shall be a minimum of 2,200 square feet heated space for single-story ranch-style and 2,800 square feet heated space for two-story homes. The developer is seeking to add variety in the housing stock for the subdivision by adding a ranch product. However, ranches at 2,800 square feet would be difficult to place on the 18,000-square-foot minimum lots. Currently, the site is developed, and about half, or 30 out of 61 of the lots have been sold and placed under contract to private, single-family owners. The home builder builds pre-sale homes and typically avoids spec homes. And here, this slide shows you Condition 10 currently and what they would request Condition 10 to be changed to. And here is renderings of the homes, some of the homes that are being proposed. They do match the same style as the two-story homes that are currently in Edenberg, so they would match, but it would just add a little variety to the neighborhood as well. I did receive an email from developer, the development group. One of the main reasons they wanted to lower the size is because they're getting requests for more seniors that want to live in the neighborhood, but they don't want to walk up and down the stairs, and they want the master on main. So this would just give them just some more flexibility. Staff recommends approval of the modification to zoning conditions for Condition Number 10 with no changes to any other condition, and there were 14 other conditions, but as the site is already developed and platted, we don't want to mess with any of the other ones. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
How many of the homes are they asking to change?
I'm not exactly sure. That would be a question for the home builder, but as 29 of them are left, I think, or 30 homes are left, they're pre-sale, so as families or owners come in, they request what they want at that time, and then they go and build it. So, they may not have that number.
Okay, alright.
I have a question. What impact would it have on the current residents?
That are already there? Financially and their value of their homes?
I, I would argue it wouldn't have an impact, just because when this was rezoned, home prices weren't nearly what they are now. So some of those two stories that may have been platted and built first would probably be cheaper than the ranches that come in that are at a smaller footprint as well. So, I, I would argue probably not a lot of, a lot of change would happen to their value.
Of that particular community?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. This is the public hearing, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, persons wish to speak in favor of the request, if they will come forward, please. Anyone here to speak in favor, including the applicant or developer?
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioner. My name is Wayne Stroud. 206 Briar Cliff Road in Jackson. I represent Edenberg Investors, better known as The Reservoir Group. And on beha, on behalf of Drew Kemp, our principal, we really appreciate how this team always looks to work together with us. I want to commend staff. It is not said enough, but your staff does a phenomenal job of building bridges, because we don't always get what we want when we do developments. We love to come in and work in community with you all and, and come together so that we can give what is best for the overall communities that we work in. And, and also, I just want to point out, TRG, we, we are invested in Henry County. This, as Kamal pointed out, was final, was approved in 2021. We've sold a majority of these lots to Ryan Homes, and, and we're still here to make sure that the community fits the needs. And as Kamal said, we're excited that we have active senior adults that want to come be part of this, and we're just looking to give them an accommodation with a ranch-style home that fits their needs so they can be part of this community as well.
Appreciate that. Okay, anyone else willing to come and speak in favor of the project? Okay, is there anyone here to speak in opposition of the project? Anyone here to speak in opposition of the project? Okay. Commissioner Wilson, this is in your district, so.
Of different styles and branches and two stories in subdivisions. I don't think any subdivision should be deemed for a two-story home or all ranch homes. I think these varieties need to be available for the community. So with that said, I will make a motion to approve.
Okay, so Commissioner Wilson's got, did you have any questions? Okay, got a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, all in favor. Motion carries. Uh huh. Next item on the agenda is RZ-23-21. Tony Perkins of Stockbridge requests a rezoning of R1 Single Family Residence to RA Residential Agricultural Property located at 1455 Highway 138 East. Kenta?
Good morning, Chair, Board Members and Citizens of Henry County. The item before use of property located at 1455 Highway 138 East. The request is to rezone the subject property from R1 Single Family Residence to RA Residential Agricultural. Future land use map is low-density suburban. This is the as-built survey that was submitted by the applicant. In review of the zoning files, the property was rezoned along with the Cutters Mill subdivision directly behind it. That was from, request was from RA to R1A on September 15th, 1987, with one condition regarding home size. This property, as well as the property directly south of it, were both rezoned at the same time. However, both properties were absent from the final plat. They are not part of the Cutters Mill subdivision. The proposed rezoning request from R1 to RA will allow for complacency with existing accessory structures and a commercial vehicle storage. Future land use map designation of the subject property is low-density suburban, which would support the request to RA. Currently, the applicant has an accessory structure to the side yard, which is enclosed metal building, where the square footage is 1,541 square feet, exceeding the maximum size of an accessory structure permitted in the R1 zoning district. That is based on the 50% rule of the zoning district. Accessory structures are allowed to be up to 50% of the heated floor space of the principal home. In this instance, it is exceeding that 50% rule. Article 5, Section 3, 1655 of the Henry County Code of Ordinances permits parking and storage of commercial vehicles in RA-zoned properties. Outside of a platted subdivision over two acres in size, applicant currently stores a semi-truck on a chase chassis. Rezoning of the subject property would bring both issues, the accessory structure and the commercial vehicle, into compliance with the current code. This is a photo of the accessory structure, and you can kind of see that red there, the commercial vehicle. The applicant has taken steps to provide screening for the commercial vehicle, again, in compliance with the commercial vehicle requirements. Staff does recommend approval of the applicant's request, the zoning advisory board on March 14th, 2020. The zoning advisory board on March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four did also recommend approval of the applicant's request with the following two conditions. One regarding clarifying commercial vehicle storage for the subject property, as well as providing a resolution to verify and obtain approved building permits for that existing accessory structure. So once again, with the rezoning to R A, the issues of compliance would be resolved, given the R A standards. Thank you, I'll be happy to take any questions you might have.
This is a public hearing, so any person wishing to speak in favor can come forward, including applicant. Anyone here wishing to speak in favor? Good morning.
I'm just here if you have questions.
No, we're here, if you've got something to say, then we, we'll ask questions in a little bit. You don't have anything to say?
No ma'am.
Okay, alright. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone here wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, Commissioner Anglin, this is in your district, so.
I don't have any questions. We've talked through this pretty extensively, is to officially get this piece of property back into compliance. Z A B's already approved it and made their request. So with that being said, I make a motion that we reduce that density number down from R one to R A.
Okay, got a motion on the floor? Got a second. If there's no discussion, all in favor, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Appeal dash twenty-four dash oh one, Shops at Walnut Creek LLC. Request administrative appeal for property located on Jonesboro Road, west of Chambers Road and Landlock one oh eight, Tucson, and County Attorney Nora.
Good morning Madam Chair, Chair and members of the board. This is an appeal of zoning verification letter for Shops at Walnut Creek. The crux of the appeal has to do with the required distance separation between automobile car wash facilities. Director Kirk will present the Department of Zoning, Planning and Zonings position related to the distance requirement, and then the attorney for the appellant will present his position. I'll come after the attorney for the appellant and present the county's legal position with respect to interpretation of the applicable section of the U L D C. Thank you.
Good morning Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners and the members of the community. Yes, this is AP twenty-four oh one, Appeal to Interpretation of our, of our U L D C. This is just the aerial of the location. This is actually at the corner of Jonesboro Road and Chambers where the new Publix is located. The parcel in question, it's kind of hard to see, but it's right to the left of, where's the mouse? Well, it's going to be to the, I guess, lower-left corner of the green outline, if you will, along Jonesboro Road. And this just shows the, it's a zoning PD, again, just another aerial showing the location. The subject property is zoning PD, planned development with a C two commercial pod, and it is within the boundaries of the highway corridor overlay. On April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, the Board of Commissioners did approve a U L D C amendment, ordinance number twenty-three oh four, meaning the U L D C to provide supplemental standards for automobile car washes. This is just a copy of a portion of the, of the ordinance. The gist of the ordinance basically reads that a car wash shall be separated from all other car washes with, with or outside the zoning jurisdiction of Henry County. There should be a separation, distance of one mile, measured using partial boundaries as a center point at which minimum separation distance shall extend from in all directions, and no minimum separation distance measurement shall overlap. On February second, two thousand and twenty-four, Planning and Zoning Department did provide a zoning verification letter regarding information of the land use compliance for automobile car washes on the subject property. The letter stated that the car wash would not be permitted based on additional requirements established in ordinance twenty-three oh four and supplemental standards, section four point oh three, point three five of the U L D C. An appeal request was submitted by the applicant on March first, two thousand and twenty-four regarding the issue of the staff determination and interpretation of ordinance twenty-three oh four and the distance requirements between car wash establishments. Staff does recommend that the board complete the appeal process by affirming the interpretation and determination of the Planning and Zoning Department. I would like to show.
Y'all, I think it's Tucson.
It's the magnetism. Hello, hello? Hello, here you go. Animal magnetism. Alright, so. It's coming from the overhead, so you can't show it. Alright, so basically, I just had a, a map showing the one-mile radius between the different car washes in the area. Unfortunately, we can't show the overhead, so actually, when the appellant comes up, they'll be able to show you the distance. What you'll notice on there is that you're roughly within, well, I'll let them show their, show their, show their case, okay? But yeah, this is, shows the outline, I can pass it around so you, you guys can see it. And that's all I have. You'll see on there, basically, the two dots representing the two car washes on Jonesboro Road, the red circle indicates the one-mile radius. You can see that they actually touch or overlap. Alright, that's all I have, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, am I supposed to do something?
Since this is a public hearing, we should open a public hearing.
We need to do what? Oh, okay.
Open a public hearing.
Okay, okay, does he get to?
And the appellant's attorney, I guess, present his position, yes.
Okay, alright, we're opening a public hearing.
Madam Chair.
Okay, so all those in favor that want to speak in favor, that would be you, okay? Thank you. Is that correct? So.
Apologies, Madam Chair and Board Members. Since this is an appeal, there really won't be any members of the public that come and speak, even in favor or in opposition. The appellant's attorney will get to present his position.
I will return and present the county's position, and then the public hearing will be closed.
Okay, alright, because we, we had already had a public hearing on this, hadn't we before?
Because, because it's an appeal, you did have a public hearing on the original document.
Original, right.
But they had challenged Mr. Kirk's interpretation of whether this use is permitted.
Okay, alright, okay, thank you. Thank you for clarification, go ahead, so.
Madam Chair, members of the Board of Commissioners, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to appeal. My name is Kirk Felstool with the law firm of Smith, Gamble and Russell. We're at thirty-five eleven West Peachtree in the city of Atlanta. I'm here on behalf of both the applicant and, and the property owner in this case. This property is located roughly at twenty-four seventy-eight Jonesboro Road. I am. It, it is part of the Shops at Walnut Creek. It is along, it is west of I seventy-five, on the north side of Jonesboro Road. The, the property that is, the, the other auto wash that we're talking about is, is a take five that's on the east side of Jonesboro Road. I think it's important at the outset to establish, and this is why I will apologize, but we will need some formality, because this is not like a rezoning, a permit or a variance, where the Board of Commissioners is vested with discretion. This is an appeal that is, and we've outlined this in, in the appeal application, but this is an appeal from a decision of the, the staff. In this case, it's, it's our position that the distance requirement between automobile wash establishments I set out in your ordinance is one mile, not two. The staff, we respectfully take the position that they, they have aired, that they have taken the position that it is, it is two miles. There's no disagreement about the facts. If you look at this exhibit three that we've got on the board and the top note, the top exhibit, and we're talking about Outlet six of the Shops at Walnut Creek. It is one point nine, six, seven miles from Outlet six to the take five, and, and there's no, there's no dispute about that. So this is really an interpretation about, about your ordinance. Your ordinance, just, just so we make sure we're, we're talking about the same thing, your ordinance allows appeals of interpretations of staff. And your ordinance declares that when there is an appeal, this is a judicial or quasi-judicial proceeding, which means that you sit as, as judges interpreting the ordinance. You may not like the outcome, but in this role, your job or your, your role as, as provided in the ordinance is to determine what the correct interpretation of the ordinance is. This is section, section four point oh three, point three five of your ordinance, and this is what it says. Automobile wash establishment, to avoid over-concentration, an automobile wash establishment shall be separated from other automobile wash establishments, either within or without the jurisdiction of Henry County, by a minimum distance of five thousand two hundred and eighty feet. That's one mile. That's what your, that's what your ordinance says. There's another provision in the ordinance that we're going to talk about in, in, in a moment, but that doesn't change the plain reading of this ordinance. And to put that in perspective for you, five thousand two hundred and eighty feet is one mile, which means obviously, two miles is, is going to be ten thousand five hundred and sixty feet. We are ten thousand two hundred and thirteen feet from the nearest wash establishment. We're three hundred and forty-five, seven feet short of being two miles. That's thirty-three one hundredths of a mile from being short of two miles. But your requirement says one mile. There is additional language in your ordinance that talks about how to do the measurement using circles that don't overlap. It does not say that those circles are a mile each. It does not say that in the ordinance. It just says that you measure from the property line in each direction, and there can be no overlap. But it does not say that it is a mile radius. What it says is that there should be a separation in distance of five thousand two hundred and eighty feet or one mile. So if you're going to do the measurements using the circles that you're talking about, it would be, in order to make sure there's no overlap on a one-mile distance, you would use a one-half mile radius. There's no other way to use the measurement that you are talking about. And exhibit four, which we have for you, shows that there is no overlap. It's the only way to read the ordinance. Remember, this is a quasi-judicial proceeding. It is a, an interpretation of your ordinance. The Georgia Supreme Court, when we are interpreting ordinances, has given us four rules. The Georgia Supreme Court can be complicated, but these rules are simple. And the rules are simple because an ord, we are on notice of what the ordinance says, because we have to be governed by it as citizens. Whatever the ordinance says, we have to follow, and there are consequences. For that reason, the Georgia Supreme Court has four rules that we need to follow. One is that an ordinance. An ordinance is to be interpreted with its plain meaning. The minimum distance is five thousand two hundred and eighty feet, period. The second rule is that only the language can be, only language in the ordinance can be used to interpret the ordinance. We, we as citizens, while we're on notice of what the ordinance says, we can't be expected to notice, know what people think or what may be in minutes. All we can be expected to be on notice of is what is in the ordinance. The third thing, the third rule of interpretation is that if an ordinance intends something, it should so state it, and again, because we are on notice. If the county had intended for there to be a two-mile distance between automobile wash establishments, it could have just said that, just like you've done, for example, in your, your adult entertainment ordinance, which requires a straight line of forty feet between property lines in any direction. This ordinance, if it had intended to be two miles, would have said two miles. And the final rule of interpretation is that if there's any ambiguity, it's to be interpreted in favor of the property owner or the citizen. And that is because we have to live with the consequence of those, of those ordinances. There is no provision here. There is no provision here that tells us we need to be two miles apart. There is a discussion, and has been a discussion, and the staff believes it's two miles. They believe that this provision, along with the provision of measuring distances in any direction, is to be interpreted as effectively one-mile circles. But there's no, there's nothing defined in your ordinance that tells us, we looked through the entire ordinance, there's nothing defined that would tell us that a minimum distance of 5,280 feet is to be interpreted as anything other than a one-mile distance. This is a, and for those reasons, we would request that the decision of the staff be reversed and that this ordinance be interpreted as to be a one-mile distance between automobile washes, just like the ordinance says. Again, as I opened up, we may not like the result. You can change the ordinance, but this is what it says today. For purposes of this hearing, we've got to have a little bit of formality. I looked through your ordinance, and it requires that if we want to introduce anything, that we submit it numbered and identify what those exhibits are. They are largely the exhibits in the application packet. I've given it a copy to your clerk already. But Exhibit 1 is the zoning verification letter. Exhibit 2 is the language from the ordinance adopted. Exhibit 3 is the GIS overlay showing the distance between auto washes. Exhibit 4 is the other overlay that we did, showing the half-mile radius. Exhibit 5 is an affidavit from our engineer. He's the one that prepared those overlays, and it really just authenticates those documents. Exhibit 6 is a certified copy of your Unified Land Development Code. And Exhibit 7 is a copy of the agenda packet. It's the same one that we pulled offline. It's the same one that your staff gave us, but it completes the record. I also have to state our objections. We submitted objections with our application letter. But I want to announce two objections here. One is that the exhibit that was shown to you on the overhead, we've not seen before. And we're entitled to notice and opportunity to review those documents ahead of time so that we can respond to those. So we object to that. And the second is that because this is a judicial or quasi-judicial proceeding, the appellant should get the last word. And in this case, that's not what's about to happen. Your county attorney is going to get up and state her position. We're entitled to the opportunity to respond. And with that, I appreciate the opportunity, and thank you.
Well, this is my board meeting.
And this is our board meeting. And so we're just going to move forward. Is there any... Commissioner Johnson, this is... I mean, Commissioner Lewis, this is your district.
Yeah, I have something, but I know our attorney's going to respond.
Okay, all right.
So I'll save my comments until after she responds to the appellant.
Good morning again. I do not disagree with the state law principles that appellate's attorney discussed regarding statutory construction. He's absolutely right about the way statutes should be construed in the state of Georgia. However, if you look at his exhibit, his Exhibit 2, he conveniently omitted the part of our ULDC provision that staff is relying on. And that is the sentence that follows, that follows his last sentence. Our ULDC provision goes on to state, "The separation distance shall be measured utilizing parcel boundaries." So that's the boundaries around the automobile wash establishment "at the center point at which the minimum separation distance shall extend in all directions." So that means north, south, east, and west. And it goes on to state, "It shall be prohibited for any such minimum separation distance..." Excuse me. "Any minimum separation distance measurements to overlap." Those two sentences are the provisions that planning and zoning staff are relying upon. And when you read those two sentences, the plain meaning of those sentences is that separation distances should indeed be measured from the parcel boundaries, not from any other point where those automobile wash establishments sit. So on the basis of that language, I submit that the decision of the planning and zoning staff should actually be sustained. Thank you.
Commissioner Anglin, did you have any comments? And then Commissioner Lewis, this is your district. I mean...
You want to start down the line?
Yeah, I'll start down there. Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you. It sounds to me that we need to clean up the language on how we establish the boundaries. They can be quite confusing. So if we could clean that language up, it'd be more a simple understanding for the county's staff and for the developers moving forward. So that's my comments.
Commissioner Wilson, do you...
I agree. I think the language needs to be changed a bit on that. Because some people are also looking at, it says minimum, but not maximum.
Yeah, he didn't include...
All of the language that she just got up and read. He only included what he wanted us to see on this here, so...
So we just, you know, see a little more of it and then just help, like Commissioner Wilson said, on our end, just cleaning it up a little bit.
Okay. Commissioner Anglin.
So first, Mr. Kirk, who represents the applicant, went on several times to remind us of our job slash quasi-judicial duty. With that being said, I don't particularly always say kind to folks reminding me of the oath and the job that we have. With that being said, I and other commissioners that are on this board, not everybody was on the board at the time, put this ordinance together with staff. And with that being said, it was intended to be a radius from the straight line from center point when we designed that. In understanding our quasi-judicial duty, the decision we make today will be a presence for all future cases. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you for the comments, my colleagues. And actually, thank you to our county attorney and to the appellant for your presentations. I just want to point out a couple of things. Our county attorney was correct in that you did cut off your presentation and not include all of the language of the ULDC. And of course, I know you weren't present when we actually had the vote about this ULDC rewrite and what we actually enacted. So our intent was very clear when we had that meeting. And you can actually go back, it is on tape. You can go back and see it. But I just wanted to really hone in on one thing that you said. You said, quote, "As citizens, we have to live with the consequence of the ordinance." You are absolutely correct. And I'm a citizen of this district, and I have to live with the consequence of the ordinance. And so we're not going to live with the consequence of having something that we do not wish to have in our district. So I do understand your position. And as the appellant, you have the right to take a legal position. You have the right to take it further. That is your right, and if you choose to exercise it, good luck to you. But at this time, we are not going to choose to live with the consequence of having a car wash at this location. If we do have to go forward and clean up the language, which I actually think we don't, I think it's a clear interpretation. You choose to interpret it a different way. But in the spirit of which it was written, which is actually verified and on tape, we will go ahead, and I want to have a motion to deny the appellant's request.
A motion and a second, to deny. There's no further discussion, all in favor. Motion carries. Stephanie, do we have anyone signed up for public comment? Okay, thank you. I'd like to get a motion to approve the minutes for February 20th, March 5th, March 8th, and March 28th. And get a motion to approve all those minutes. Got a motion and a second. Got a motion and a second. No discussion, all in favor. Motion carries. Upcoming meeting, April 23rd at 6:30 is our regularly scheduled BLC meeting. May 7th, 2024 at 9:00 a.m. is our regularly scheduled BLC meeting. Also, we do have a call budget workshop to take place today at 1:00. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.